It shall be six o'clock. This is the regular meeting of the Eastland City Commission. It is May fifteenth. I've asked Cecil Fundenberg to lead us in a prayer and Richard to lead us in a prayer. Cecil?
If you would pray with me. Father God, we are so thankful for the opportunity, Lord, to serve the citizens of Eastland. We're especially thankful for Shirley and James as our newest members. Father, we just ask that every decision that we might be in pleasing in your sight, that you guide us and direct us in all things that we say and we do. Father, we just ask for your blessings on this country. Father, we pray for our country because it's in, seems to be in pretty deep trouble and we need you. Father, we ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. If you haven't silenced your cell phones yet, I would ask you to do that now. First item of business is approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five canvassing the election, return and declaring the results of the May sixth, twenty twenty-three general election. And before we do that, I first want to thank Zach Doyle and Ben McNamara for their service to the community and for their time that they served as commissioners here in Eastland. We appreciate their time and effort that they put forth. And honor, I guess we need to do this, but as we mentioned, the resolution canceling the returns and declaring the results of the May sixth general election in the city of Eastland, Texas, Shirley Stewart had the most, or had a hundred and forty-seven votes, Cecil Fundenberg had a hundred and fifty-two, and James Doyle a hundred and forty-four. And they've been declared the winners of that election. We now need to make that official with the approval of this resolution. And I also want to mention that we have with us a special guest of Bill and Patty Dolan. Bill, a long-term employee of the city. And they've been a great help to the community through many years. We appreciate y'all coming tonight. And of course, your precious daughters here. So it's good to have them with us. I need to approve this resolution, twenty twenty-three dash zero five.
I approve the resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five, I'm sorry.
A motion from Richard.
You'll have to second it, won't you?
Oh, okay, yeah. And I will, yeah, you are still on.
Then I'll second.
And a second from Cecil. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I also vote for that, to make that official. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, administer of oath, office.
You will, James and Shirley stand.
Yeah, they may stand.
Sorry. Raise your right hands. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Shirley Stewart.
Cecil Fundenberg.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
And I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city commissioner of the city of Eastland, Texas.
Of city commissioner of the city of Eastland, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state of help me God.
And of this state of help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I'll sign it. I'll collect them here a little bit.
Okay. Now, the election of city officers, the first one is the chairman or mayor, and the nominations are open for that position.
Mayor, I think you've done a fantastic job of leading us, and I would move that you be, that you be asked to serve again as our chairman.
I move you be elected by acclamation.
Okay. A motion from Cecil and a second from Richard to nominate me as mayor and by acclamation, so we'll vote for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, the second position that's held now by Richard Ross Center is a chairman pro temp, and nominations are open for that position.
I'll nominate Richard Rosander as chairman pro temp.
I'll second.
You had a motion from Shirley and a second from James. Any other nominations? We'll vote for that one as well. All in favor of Richard being chairman pro temp?
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Secretary, or treasurer, secretary of treasurer is Cecil Fundenberg. We'll open nominations for that position.
I'll nominate Cecil Fundenberg.
Got a nomination for Cecil?
I'll second.
James is second at that nomination. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Assistant treasurer. Nomination for assistant treasurer. We have both of those. We can fill those with the same nomination, as far as I'm concerned, the exact same title.
I move that James Doyle and Shirley Stewart be appointed as assistant treasurer.
Second.
Got a second from, see, Richard, got a motion from Cecil and a second from Richard to nominate James Doyle and Shirley Stewart as assistant treasurers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Public comment? We have nothing on public comment. They approved the minutes of the April seventeenth meeting. You've got a copy of those in front of you. We'll entertain a motion for those.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting.
A second.
Got a motion from Richard and a second from Cecil. And any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. I did vote for that. Financial report? Leslie?
We have a March financial report there. We haven't done the same part yet. Seems like, since we just had a mission meeting, we haven't.
This is your shortage?
Yeah. But you do have the sales tax graph showing our receipts for the month of May, which were excellent. And we're very pleased with the way sales tax is going and hope it continues through the rest of the year.
It's not the best May we've ever had.
Getting better. We appreciate that.
If you look up, if you look up for March and have any questions, just give me a call. I'm just. I don't know.
Okay. If they have any other questions for J.J. or for Leslie? Thank you very much. Board of City Commission, we discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one is discussion consideration, second reading of order twenty-three dash eight-nine-three, amending section nineteen thirteen, planning and zoning board, adding alternate, alternate board members. We did this the first reading last month.
Yes, sir. This is just basically to mirror the B.O.A. board. We have some people in the community that would want to serve as alternates and not as full members, and just trying to keep things moving so that way we can ensure quorum when the need arises. This is the second. Anything I need to add, Tony?
No, no worries. So I think this is just something, like you said, it just keeps us from having to cancel meetings if we don't have quorum. This way we can ensure that things can move, not get held up as far as progress and additions in the city.
Okay.
I move with this order twenty-three dash eight-nine-three, the second reading.
A motion from Richard to pass order twenty-three eight-nine-three on a second reading.
I'll second.
James seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration for approval of new board member for the planning and zoning board.
Yes, sir. And ma'am, the P&amp;Z board met last Monday, and they got three applicants. Two are brought to you as full members and one as an alternate, thirty days from, I guess, today, that we become an alternate member. In front of you, there are the applications that we received for that. Tony?
Yes, the applicants that we got were all people that have lived here in the town and one new addition to the town. The applicants were Bill Culverhouse, Rebecca Massingill, and the new person to town is Jill Warren, who is the wife of Ryder Warren, who's took over for Tom. So they were all very interested in helping the city out by serving on the board. And since we had Mr. Arlett move out of town, that created one vacancy, and with James being brought on to city commission, that opened up another one. So this is good timing that we were able to get these people to come forward.
Two of our four board members, one of the nine.
Yes, sir. So what, my recommendation to planning and zoning and their approval to move this on to y'all was to have Bill and, Bill and Jill, come on as full members, and then within thirty days, for you guys to go ahead and approve Rebecca to come on as an alternate, once that position is finalized after thirty days from the second reading today. The, it would be good to have her as an alternate because I was informed that Ms. Camacho, who has been on P&amp;Z for a while, is going to be moving outside of the city limits, so we will be losing her here in a couple of months. So it would be good to have somebody lined up in the alternate spot to go ahead and have them be able to come on if we are not able to find another person to fill as a full member at that time.
Okay.
I mean, you mentioned, you mentioned resignation from the board.
Oh, yes. David Arlett had moved outside of the city limits. He was, he had served.
Was that family one?
Well, well, with losing Mr. Doyle to you guys, yes, sir.
I think that there's no requirement that Mr. Doyle resigned from the community.
Well, I believe since he's coming, you know, P&amp;Z commission is coming here with our recommendations, right? So then he's, we'd be basically delivered, he did, he. On both boards. I believe that's what we had understood, was that.
If there's any monetary benefit, then that's what's to determine.
So we're checking, we're checking into that now because you also said.
Is that, Richard serving as commissioner annual?
Yeah.
But the economic development board would be a little bit different than planning and zoning, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's a lot different. It's different, yes.
Because since planning and zoning comes to the city. I don't know.
So does it.
Well, we need to be clear about whether that's a, an opinion or a fact.
Well, that's what we can do is. Voting on these members, we're not gonna, well, I guess we would. What we could do is go ahead and have Jill come on as the second alternate for now, in thirty days, while we're trying to verify with James if he can stay on that board or not. It was under my understanding that he couldn't, but I have no problem, you know, he's, you know, James is a good mind to have on that board, and he's done it for a while, so if I don't have to lose him, I think that'd be great. So we can definitely verify with, with Eileen, how that, you know, if that is, you know, if he can stay on and still move Jill on as an alternate and not upset the apple cart until we can get a final. And if need be, we can have her come back next month if it's determined that Mr. Doyle is not allowed to be on that board anymore, and then we can have her move up.
Yeah, I think Eileen may tell us something different. I think he's able to do that, if he chooses to do that. That's his choice.
Okay.
I think is where that gets into. And I know Richard's on Xon Development.
I'm not trying to get rid of him in this light.
I understand. I understand. You're trying to, and you're right, it can be a definite, double-dip thing, but it also can be a, an avenue of information in helping both boards.
Right.
Understand what's going on.
Yes, sir, for sure. If I can keep him, I'd like to.
Let's just make sure there's not a reason why he can't, and it's his decision, personal decision.
But what we can do to keep this moving is to go ahead and.
I think your suggestion is a good suggestion.
Yes, sir.
The motion needs to be worded in that way to do that. I move that the first position be filled by Bill Culverhouse and Rebecca Massingill and by Jill Warren as a second alternate.
No, no, sir. For Bill to come on to replace Mr. Arlett as a full member.
Okay.
And Jill and Rebecca to come on as alternates, once that, those positions are finalized.
Then I amend my motion to that Bill Culverhouse replaces Mr. Camacho, and that Jill and Rebecca fill the alternate positions.
Replace Mr. Arlett. Mr. Arlett, yeah.
Okay, Cecil made a motion that Bill Culverhouse be a full member of the planning and zoning, and have Jill Warren and Rebecca Massingill be alternates. And Jill will be the first alternate, Rebecca the second alternate. And that is a motion by Cecil in the second. From Richard, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, good deal. City manager briefing?
Yes, sir. On the GLO flood mitigation stuff, I'm still talking to landowners and some conversation with some engineers. We're gonna have to kind of put a cutoff date for them to either participate in this or not, because we've got to get to moving forward on this. Friday, Commissioner Frontenberg was here, and we had the final public hearing for recommendations from HDR as part of our H and H study. They came up with some very decent solutions to help with the flooding issue. We just got to figure out. Signs and signals out there, I'm still waiting an answer from Tex dot. The dam repairs, that was kind of part of one of the deals with HDR. We are still gonna do some, a little bit of dam work, part of the GLO. And now at the airport, that project's well underway, expanding the aprons, and by the time it's all done, said and done, it's gonna be a great benefit to the airport. And have, we're doing, and are really, really happy with it. That's about it. Any questions?
Can you answer a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, without going into details, can you just kind of summarize what the GLO is?
The GLO project is, was a, it's through the general land office, and it's for a flood mitigation project to help reduce the flooding in Eastland, and it, it's made up of different parts, all the parts kind of work together. The first part is the cleaning, excuse me, clearing of some vegetation along the north and south fork of the Leon River, which we have to get landowners permission. They want to go back a certain way, but they can't go into the riverbed itself and move dirt. But they can go to the edge and clear, and grab stuff and pull it out. The second phase of that is one to be, they still haven't, we still haven't got clearance of what they want to do with Ringland Lake Dam and that, because there's some wetlands that possibly have to be mitigated if we do too much there, and clearing some trees off Lake Eastland Dam and possibly some spillway repairs. And the last part of it will be curving, gutting some streets to use them as water flumes to help move the water. That's kind of the broad strokes of it. And the second part of that was that flood infrastructure fund grant, which we got a new H and H study out of it, kind of works hand in hand with that, also the recommendations.
Okay. Before we go on, I'm gonna say a couple of things that I intended to say before I let J.J.'s start. I'm on. Two things have happened. This is not a criticism, but this is to make y'all aware. Falls back to you, Joe, about the saw that we lost. My opinion is, if we have something that's newsworthy that's being put on Facebook, the commissioner, J.J. needs to know, and he needs to tell the commissioners what's going on. I found out about that saw through somebody that won't make a donation to pay for it. He told me about the saw, and I just laughed. He said, what are you laughing about? I said, well, J.J. hasn't told me about this saw yet. And when I talked to J.J., he said he didn't find out about it for a couple of days. And that's not a criticism, and it's not a big deal, other than when you go out and you put it on the news, or it's in the paper, or Facebook, or whatever we do, and something like that happens, and we don't know about it, and somebody asks us about it, we're gonna do dibble, 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 dibble. And if it's newsworthy, and that means if it's being put out on Facebook or whatever, if y'all are doing something or something that's happened, and you're trying to raise money or anything, somehow make us aware. I actually went on Facebook and followed the fire department, I guess, or what it is, just to solve something, y'all put something out there, I can hopefully see it. Same thing with the police department with public work, whatever we're doing, keep us aware. That's not a criticism. I just, that's me personally, but I think all the commissioners would like to be aware. And I know we've got somebody donating and paying for that saw, and I think that's great. I got that, that's a hats off to our fire department, and somebody stepping up that quick and saying, yeah, we'll donate and buy you another saw, I got this cool as it can be. So we thank you for your efforts and everything you're doing. The second thing, because I drive around Eastland, and I don't know how we need to do this, and we need to get our head together, but the grass is growing, not on the curb, but between the curb and the street. I don't know who that falls on, and where we want to draw the line, but I think we need to make a public, the mayor or the commissioner or somebody needs to make a public plea for people to try to clean that up and help us as a city make that better, because it's getting to be a real issue. I know last year, we talked about the one out there by the woodland, and how bad that was, three foot tall, going down the far end of Plummer, that type of deal. So we need to have a discussion somewhere along the line about whatever code it form. I don't want to write tickets or anything, but I think just a letter or a note in the paper or something, asking people to help us keep that clean if they can, you know?
Yes, sir. I believe the code refers to that the property owner is responsible up to the. Curb line and the, their side of the right of way, to keep it mowed down. I'll double check with Terry in the morning and see if he's, you know, what the code actually says pertain to that, and if, if not, we can figure out what we need to do, and just maybe make a plea, like you said, for people to.
Well, yeah, we need to know who's responsible, because someone, if it is something out of compliance, and we definitely need to handle it, if it's around city properties, we need to handle it. This seems stuff around city properties probably needs to be addressed.
Yes, sir.
So anyway, let's do something with that, and let's get a plan. We can make a public plea, and project instant dry, and all those things that have been in the past.
You mentioned that Mr. Hoffman, that was a coup, coup, coup. Let's start the call.
I thought something, I remember that.
Pick up, clean up, pick up.
We lost our old toes, they moved away, so. Anyway, I want to say that. Next is code compliance, Tommy?
Yes, commissioners, we opened April with thirty-nine cases. Nine new cases were opened, zero were closed. That left us with a month-end total of forty-eight. Total violations opened were eighteen, didn't have any closed. There were two junk vehicles. Now, the reason that code compliance is so light, Terry was out with medical for quite a bit of April, and so that's why these numbers are so light. He's back in the office, full cleared, and he's able to get back on it again. So we expect next month to have more results like you normally would see.
Okay. Anything else for Tommy?
Oh, and Terry told me that he didn't have a place to really notate it on his graph, but we got a big payment of somebody that was here in town that had owed us quite a bit of money on water, and it was through Terry and the police department going after this individual. We ended up getting a pretty decent sized check to pay off what they owed us. So it was over a thousand dollars, I believe, so.
Good deal.
Yes, sir.
New work. Stay on top of it. That's good. Chief Lee?
I'm sorry. I'd just like to, as, on part of the police department and myself, I'd like to welcome Ms. Stewart and Mr. Doyle to the city commission. We're excited about y'all being on here, and we do appreciate your service and helping us move this thing forward. We enjoy y'all being here.
That's what you call sucking up.
No.
Charlie, Charlie, you want to put your body somewhere?
Aren't you glad you could go next?
April, we had three hundred and one calls for service. We had fifty-seven reports taken. We had four hundred and forty-three business checks. These are something I pushed when I came on, and our people have just really done this, and we are getting compliments left and right at the office. So these business checks were actually leaving cards in their doors to let them know, and I've had quite a few calls about that. Thirteen arrests, our arrests were, are down a little bit. We had, one of our top officers is training right now, one of our other ones has been going through some K-9 training, so we were down a little bit there. We did deal with sixteen cases that were filed with the DA's office. Ninety-five citations were issued, with two hundred and sixty-one warnings for three hundred and fifty-six contacts. Our animal control officer, our secretary's been out with her mom that about cut her fingers off, so she's been out there, so we've had to use our ACO in the office quite a bit. But anyway, she's issued three citations and, and four warnings, and we've had fifty-five calls for service, even when they're sitting in the office, that she's had to take care of. Seven impoundments. Four dogs have been adopted. We kind of had a busy month, even though we had all this other stuff going on. We had the, the shooting at one oh four East Sedosa, which ended up being a guy got shot in the face and was supposedly held up inside a trailer house behind this, this house, that kind of situation. There's nothing pushing us, I'm not gonna send my guys in there. After multiple attempts to get him to come out, I called in Abilene SWAT. Abilene SWAT come down, we cleared the, the two trailer houses. He had left that residence, but after an extensive search, which I can't say enough for my young officers, they did a fantastic job. We turned over every rock. They, we went in every abandoned house in the city. I did not realize there were that many. But we, we, everywhere we went to look for this guy, he eventually called and turned himself into us for a cheeseburger. So I told the guys, we'll buy a cheeseburger all day long if we can get a felon out of it. So that's what we did. He turned himself in, we got him off the street. He is still in jail, and we're looking to get him sent away. He's a pretty, pretty dangerous guy, and I'm glad to have him off the street. We've had some large drug busts again last month. Our K-9 team hit a large bust for Ranger P.D., actually, where we got lots of fentanyl, lots of meth, another great bust for her at this same residence that we had this other deal at, but dealing with a different family. We had a bad family violence situation there where a minor was strangled. We placed that guy in jail, and he's still in jail, not getting out. Our K-9 team also hit a bunch of T-XC gummies, which are, T-XC is what's in marijuana, but this was the strongest measurable amount that they've ever, that the, that the people that tested have ever seen inside the gummy. So we were excited to get those off the road. Sam and Jeff just.
Where was that?
Here in town, somewhere right out.
In, in Eastland?
Eastland.
Okay, because you were in Ranger on the other one.
Ranger on the other one. She went over to assist him on the other one over there. And she's made several, I mean, we've made several smaller busts, but that was the most significant one. Sam and Jeff just continue to move forward. They're doing great. Jeff's moving right along with his training. We're excited about that. We keep getting him, getting more and more training for him, getting him up to speed on things. We did the donuts for, for dads, it's actually for the dads, but in years past, we haven't had a lot of parents show up, so we always send our officers up there. We have a large group of officers that went up there for that. We only had two officers that had to go in and sit with kids this time, so that says something. We have a lot of parents there, and we were excited about having those parents at our school. That's a great thing. We had two vehicle pursuits this, this last month. Neither ended any major damage, multiple drug busts. We're continuing with our training. One of the things we're looking at now that we used in DPS was an FN three oh three, which is a less lethal option that I'm looking at and researching right now, that we'll be looking at later on to, to help with situations with people that we end up having to take down without having huge lethal force on them. But April was a pretty busy, busy month for us. We've jumped through hoops with this guy, getting him put away on the shooting, but again, I would just like to say, I'm so proud of Eastland Police Department for the way they handled this. Our guys stepped right up there, put themselves in harm's way. When I got there, they were holding the perimeter. I didn't have to do much adjusting to it at all. They did a fantastic job. And of course, hats off to Abilene SWAT, because this is a number of times, I know at least twice, I know that they've come and really built us out when we needed them.
That's about all there is. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Pitt?
Let me have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard you mentioned fentanyl. Is that a problem here in Eastland?[1752.87]
Yes, ma'am.
I've heard of it.
It's a problem nationwide, but we're seeing a lot more here in Eastland, a lot of come out the interstate and we're hitting quite a few fentanyl busts.
Thank you, Chief Lee.
All right, Commissioners, thank you for your time. In April, the Eastland Fire Department responded to sixty-two calls for service. That puts us at two point zero six calls per day and brings us to four hundred and ninety-nine calls for the year. That's the fiscal year, so I mean, not go over. We had forty-seven events that occurred in the city, thirteen that occurred in the county with two mutual aid assistance to our neighbors. We didn't get to install one smoke detector again this month. I think we'll end up covering the town on a smoke detector at a time, but. Yeah, we were, we had five calls this month that occurred after ten o'clock and before seven in the morning. We attended two structure fires, four grass fires, one vehicle fire, thirty-six EMS events where we assisted the, the ambulance transport, three motor vehicle accidents, three public assists and thirteen some type of false call or some type of investigation. No hazmat rescues occurred this, during this month of April. And our roster now is carrying twenty-six volunteers, we'll have twenty-seven tomorrow. So, April, you see April and November, when we get into these spring light, fall light months, the mild weather slows us down a little bit, not compared to last year. Last year was a little bit of a caveat, but this year it slows us down a little bit. So, but still, we're still carrying two point three calls a month out of the fire station down there. And I think it's seventy, average is seventy-one a month. We had a good rip event, rip fest, we gave away the free breakfast, I believe we gave away a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty breakfast tacos that morning and had, had a good time there. To follow up on a project I brought to y'all a while back, it kind of, I think, went cold. I followed up with Text Dot, they talked to the engineer, Jordan Pierce, and, or Jordan Perry. Jordan Pierce was one of our members of the fire, Jordan Perry, well, he said we're sixty to ninety days out on getting our traffic control device on semen that will, will be able to manipulate the traffic when we're entering and, and for emergencies. So, we've had several close calls there where vehicles, the, the first vehicle sees us approaching the right of way, so they stop, but the one behind them doesn't see, doesn't know why the car in front of them's stopping and several deals. So, there, there, that project went a little cold, I followed up on it. I'm hoping sixty to ninety days we'll have some type of traffic intervention device there. Our new SCBA's were due to go in service tomorrow, a vendor called and canceled, it's now next Tuesday. We're really excited about that, we have already trained with them in-house and it does things that we, if you recall, six of them has thermal imaging capability on the harness and, and I think it's gonna improve our safety and I think we'll have the benefit of that equipment for many years. Will serve this community and our, our members. Our KHL saw, I was gonna mention that to you, that's what I think Gordon Graham calls unintended consequences. The intent of the Facebook post was to educate the public that that saw was out there, hoping someone would bring it back. But once again, as we, we have seen numerous times over and over and over, this community just continues to, to support our emergency services and then the calls started coming in and a, a, a lot of things started happening and, and citizens and civic groups and even businesses wanted to replace that saw. And, and that wasn't the intent of the Facebook post, it was to make it aware that that saw was out there and hopefully we can recover it. We did not recover the saw, but it has been replaced and numerous attempts from different people and civic groups were, were trying to do that and, and it's, it's amazing, we continue to see the outpouring of support and donations like that. Right now, the fire department, we are again in a workforce, a trial and tribulation. One of our firefighters is in a long-term medical leave, we're predicting another four weeks and our ASIA firefighter resigned and went to Anna Fire Department. So, we're in our fifth week of, of a double vacancy. So, myself and firefighter Dylan Coglin are working back and forth to cover the station. This, we're entering our fifth week for, for advertising, for job, the vacancy and, and we've had, we actually have zero applications pending at this time. We've interviewed four and was, we're, we're unable to come to whether it'd be good for us or them. So, some of our challenges are, our feedback that we've gotten from a couple of candidates and is they don't want to work by themselves. We're, we're losing that, 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 they're, it's, it's not appetizing to them because they're afraid to work at the fire station by themselves, so we've had a couple deny the job for that. So, we're hoping three, four weeks, one of our volunteer members, we put through the fire academy, she will finish up any, within probably a week to ten days. We look forward to having her do that and stay certified. She will complete her EMT in the first week of June and that is, well, as of right now, all things stay static, that'll be our next paid staff member. And so, we'll, we're looking forward to that. I want to tell a story real quick about our engine six. Last week, actually it was two weeks ago, because we started a new week here two weeks ago, we backed the engine into the station and there was oil just dumping out. So, we, it was so late in the evening, we parked it overnight out of service and we came in the next morning and our city mechanic, DJ Jackson, who's also a volunteer fighter, came down, took a look at it and pretty much informed me that the complexity of this project was above his expertise. So, we're, we, I called Pierce, the manufacturer of the truck that's in dent. The truck was not drivable, it, it, obviously it wasn't even able to start. As we go through this project, and I'll make this brief, but the trials and tribulations that we went through, DJ hung in there and continued to go and he removed the part, we got the part off, that's a big step. And, and I keep looking at Bobby, because Bobby allowed him to come down there and spend his time and that's, he ended up getting that part off, replacing it and getting it put back on and that engine is back in service as of that. That part was twenty-one hundred dollars. I don't have anything to truly face this off of, but my opinion, the city was probably looking at about a ten thousand dollar bill. If we had that engine towed to a facility where those type of EV, emergency technicians, emergency vehicle technicians were to replace that part, it would have been different. So, Bobby's team through DJ, I mean, that's what it's about. And, and I think it's a huge hat off to them for what they did, for the fire department and the city. Huge saves for what we were fixing to get into and the engine's back in service and running like a charm, so. We appreciate them immensely, it works against like that. Also, we got to participate in the Eastland High School Career Day, we handed out about ten applications. Of those ten applications we handed out, eighty-two percent of them were female. Eighty-one, right in there, majority were female and that were interested in, in the fire department. So, I found that very interesting, so. And to last mention today that we are flying the flag at Hatch Staskis today is the Fallen Peace Officers Memorial, so just ask everybody to think about that for, and that's it, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate everything you're doing. Again, that's, I think, a compliment to Eastland and the fire department, all you emergency services guys and people willing to step up and help us when there's a need. I'm somewhat disappointed somebody found that saw and didn't return it.
I wish it had been, pretty clear.
Anything else for Chief Lee? Okay. We now will go into executive session in accordance with local government code five five one dash zero seven one through the D two, consultation with an attorney regarding potential litigation. We'll go with six forty-one.